Good evening and welcome to the February 25th meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. Before we get started, I would ask you to please take a moment to remember two people that were very influential in our town. One is John Parisow and Joseph Tagg. Mr. Parisow served as a member of the Historical Commission for several years. And Mr. Tagg served as a member of the Finance Committee and Planning Board. And I want to just add a little insight also. He is instrumental in the building of the Oxford Animal Shelter. So if you could just take a few moments to remember them, that would be appreciated. All right, thank you. First item on our agenda is a certificate of appreciation presented to John Flynn.
No, um, son, but would you like to come forward?
Sure, please. You can come right. The seat, you can have a seat. It won't shock you too much. Anyway, John is so instrumental in the work that he has given to this town. So it would be who, any of us, I think, to not present this certificate of appreciation. And we give this to John. Under your departure after 22 years of service to the town of Oxford, we send our heartfelt thanks and appreciation for your dedication and valuable service to our community as an Oxford Freedom Public Library trustee, an election worker, and a member of the North Oxford Sewer Study Committee in the town of Oxford. And this is presented by the entire Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, and the entire town of Oxford, all the citizens. And we have signed this and we'd like to present this to you on John's behalf, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was just great.
I absolutely will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please, excuse me. I'm touching rather monitor. Set this one off. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
I've known John for many, many years as a former resident of the north end of town. I got to know your dad and mom very well. They were very active in St. Anne's Church.
Absolutely.
Whenever there was a function, they were right there to volunteer. As far as the town is concerned, whatever we asked him, he was always there, and so was your mom. We wish that there were more people that had dedicated themselves to the community as your folks have. So please pass on our well wishes to your dad.
Absolutely will.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, library trustee.
Next item on our agenda is a short-term bond renewal presented by Jillian Connor, a new treasurer collector. Welcome.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing well. Yourself?
Good, thank you. So today, I'm here before you have your sign for approval for the short-term bond renewal. The original bond amount was for $1,222,000. This year, we paid down $119,600. So the bond renewal is for $1,102,400. The items we borrowed for on this are for the Carbuncle Bat House, the OHS Leechers, OHS Roof, the Sacarapa Bridge, and the LED streetlights. It is just a renewal. And we did receive six bids, and the bid that we actually received, the awarded, was TD Bank at 1.37% interest. It was very competitive coming in compared to the other ones that we received. It is a 10-year note unless we decide to, you know, roll in anything else and tour to a long-term borrowing. This is the second year, I believe, on this fund. And so I'm just here to ask if you'd like to reaffirm your original vote to borrow and sign the five documents that I have for you.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I have a quick question. Jillian, when you said that it's a 10-year renewable note, does that still mean we need to come in every year or so and renew it?
It is. Because it's a short term, we do have to renew yearly.
Okay. Fair enough.
Great. So entertain a motion to approve this request.
I make that motion?
I second that motion.
Second, comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. I'd be glad to sign that.
And you have them all numbered for you, so if you just want to pass them down, there is five leechers here.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. So. Thank you, Jillian.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You too. All right, next item on our, uh, we have five minutes, maybe we should wait and go to the town managers, start that.
Yes. First item has to do with acceptance of the minutes of the meeting of January 28th, 2020. At that meeting, all members were present with the exception of Selectman Malash.
Intain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And abstain, that's three yeses, one absent, one abstent, and they're approved.
Next item is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of February 4th, 2020. Again, both Selectman Malash and also Selectman Daniels were absent at that meeting.
Intain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes. And I'll abstain, that's three affirmative, one absent, and they're approved.
Next item is for the board to entertain the town clerk's request to appoint the following residents as election workers. It is a presidential election year, and the more election workers she has, the better. One of the election worker appointee hopefuls is Claire Wilson, who is no stranger to us as our former collector-treasurer. She resides at Three Howe Ave., and she would be from Precinct 4. And Wanda D. Pascal, she's from 4 Clarence Drive, Precinct 1.
Intain a motion to approve Claire and Wanda as election workers.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, they are approved.
Okay. We can do, I think, the next one fairly quickly. It's a routine matter in the sense that the Planning Board is requesting the Board of Selectmen as part of their annual town meeting potential warrant articles. They would like this board to refer a matter of actually creating a zoning law, bylaw amendment to create a new large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems bylaw, that they're hoping that once they go through the hearing process, that they will have it as a warrant article. And they also are looking to have additional articles related to zoning bylaw amendments related to that new solar bylaw. And both of these amendments would address use tables and definitions. And the Board of Selectmen, as a matter of our charter, must refer the articles to the Planning Board for the Planning Board's review. And the Planning Board will hold a public hearing prior to the annual town meeting for these proposed zoning amendments.
So entertain a motion to approve this proposal and send this back to the Planning Board.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, they are approved. Thank you.
Okay. We can do, I think, the next one fairly quickly. It's a routine matter in the sense that the Planning Board is requesting the Board of Selectmen as part of their annual town meeting potential warrant articles. They would like this board to refer a matter of actually creating a zoning law, bylaw amendment to create a new large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems bylaw, that they're hoping that once they go through the hearing process, that they will have it as a warrant article. And they also are looking to have additional articles related to zoning bylaw amendments related to that new solar bylaw. And both of these amendments would address use tables and definitions. And the Board of Selectmen, as a matter of our charter, must refer the articles to the Planning Board for the Planning Board's review. And the Planning Board will hold a public hearing prior to the annual town meeting for these proposed zoning amendments.
So entertain a motion to approve this proposal and send this back to the Planning Board.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Comments? Yes.
So, man, town manager, on their cover sheet for this, they indicated that it's still, as of the 20th, it's still a work in progress. So my question is, is, are we going to see a final copy prior to the town meeting that we'll be voting on? Meaning, I want to just make sure that our vote isn't saying that this is acceptable in its final draft. There's still other drafts to be coming, correct?
So we have until March 31st, I believe, the closing of the warrant. And I would anticipate that we'd have a more firm understanding of what that warrant article will look like. Once again, there can be amendments to any warrant article that is put on the warrant when we actually go to town meeting. But I do anticipate that there will be more information forthcoming. And I've asked for that as well from our land management department.
I just want to make sure that we're not voting on this as if it's the, it's not the final.
No.
Okay.
You're actually going to have an opportunity to vote on the entire warrant that goes to town meeting.
Yeah, that I knew.
And that, but that should have the language.
The final language in it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's more that we're letting them do all the work and then bring it back to us and move it to you.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that that's what's going to happen.
Yep.
Okay. All right, then I'm fine, then. Thank you.
Any others? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes. Now vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, that is approved.
The next item is the Oxford Annual Little League Opening Day Parade. They have requested permission, the Little League has to host their opening day parade on April 26, 2020, from 12 noon to 1:00 p.m. And again, the parade will start at the American Legion and will end in front of the Oxford Community Center. Both the police chief and the fire chief have no concerns about this request. And the police department will assign patrols to cover the event.
Intain a motion to approve the parade for those dates.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, parade is on set.
Okay. And we can do one more, I think, before the hearing. The Oxford Lions Club Fall Festival. Once again, they're ahead of the game. Before even the summer has arrived, they are requesting from the board an outdoor business permit and general entertainment license in order for them to host the annual fall festival at Jocelyn Park. The event will be held on Saturday, September 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And as usual, we feature a variety of entertainment and vendors. Both the police chief and the fire chief have no concerns about this event.
Intain a motion to approve that permit and license for the Oxford Lions.
Make that motion.
I second that motion.
Any comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, they are approved. That's great to see them so early in our change. That's great.
Well, when we return to the town manager's report, we have to get another one from the Lions Club with regards to the Easter Bunny part of the event. They're very active, which is terrific.
Next item on our agenda is a public hearing for flammable storage license for 22 Town Forest Road. Is anybody here, if you want to come up, just have a seat. I'll read the notice and to be directed. Little River Recycling Realty Incorporated, 22 Town Forest Road, Oxford, Mass. Home 540, is applied to the Oxford Board of Selectmen for a flammable storage license to keep one above-ground storage tank containing 1,000 gallons of diesel. The aggregate total of all flammable storage at 22 Town Forest Road equals 1,000 gallons. Public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, at 7:15 in the Selectmen's Meeting Room on the second floor of the Oxford Town Hall, which is located at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. Written and thorough comments from the public will be accepted before or during this meeting. And this notice was also published on our website. And let's see, I believe, the, we have an application signed by the fire chief that he's all set. And so, welcome.
Thank you.
So basically, it's just to store flammable fluids. Great. All members, any questions? We'll start there.
Yes, for the trucks, I imagine it's, is approved for the trucks.
Great. Any other question? Anybody from the public would like to say anything in regards to this matter? I don't see anything. All right.
Mr. Chairman, just also to note that our fire chief has signed off on the application, and the list of abutters for the applicant had been notified about the hearing. So the process has been followed through, and this would be the final step in being able to make that approval.
And the green cards, have those been given to our clerk? Okay, so we have those. Great. So, no other comments? Then entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, public meeting is closed. Then I would entertain a motion, excuse me, to approve this flammable storage license.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
And comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, you are approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan, for all your help.
All right. So, back to our town manager.
Yes, I have another vote in a request that's coming from the Oxford Lions Club. And they're looking to have approval from the board to host the Easter Bunny at the Bandstand event on Saturday, April 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., as well as a shredded event at the Bandstand for Saturday, April 18th, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They're requesting to use the Jocelyn Park, basically from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 in the afternoon to allow them to set up and also break down. Both our chief of police and our chief of fire have had no concerns registered about these events. They've been longstanding events, and has approved the use of the Bandstand. The Bandstand Committee has approved their use for these dates.
Intain a motion to approve these two activities for the Oxford Lions.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Any comments? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent, they are approved.
Terrific. The next item has to do with proclaiming Girl Scout Week. We're asking you to actually vote to proclaim March 8th, 2020, until March 14th, 2020, as Girl Scout Week in the town of Oxford. We will be presenting this proclamation at another meeting on the 10th of March.
Intain a motion to proclaim March 8th to the 14th as Girl Scout.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, they are approved.
Thank you. The next item has to do with the warrants for the animal control offices at that time of year, where this is a special warrant in which we post throughout the town that actually declares who our animal control offices are. This warrant would be to declare Kathleen Flynn as our animal control officer and Edward Hart as our assisting control officer. We would be notifying both the town and the state that they would be officially appointed to carry out the duties as outlined in Chapter 140, Section 137 of the Mass General Laws. The signed warrant is due to them by April 1st, 2020.
Intain a motion to approve this request.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, that's approved.
Just before I go on to my next item, I do want to say, they do a phenomenal job on behalf of the town. This town has had its share of, I think, really pretty high-profile cases with regards to animal welfare and well-being, and they have done a really terrific job in, I think, meeting the merits of their appointments. So I want to just say that because I know they work incredibly hard, and I know that the town does a lot to support them. The next item has to do with what came as a late item on my agenda, and that is the census boundary validation. The town clerk notified us that they have requested the board vote to allow the chairman to sign the boundary validation paperwork indicating the legal boundaries for the town that they are correct. Our conservation agent and expert GIS woman in the town of Oxford, Judy Lockner, has reviewed the census submission as indicated that the boundaries are indeed correct.
Intain a motion to approve this request.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent, that is approved.
Terrific. The next two items have to do with resignations. The first one is Michael Comasi has actually submitted his official resignation letter on February 14th. He alerted the town hall that he would be resigning as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We thank Mr. Comasi for his service to the town of Oxford. The next official resignation is Rose Wing. On February 21st, 2020, Rose Wing alerted the town hall that she would also be resigning as a member of the Bandstand Committee. And once again, we thank her for her long service in establishing a wonderful tradition of concerts on the Common. The next item has to do with just a preliminary announcement to you. Sean Dybal, our DPW director, has asked me to not only place in your packets, you'll find a memo that we have worked on, the two of us, detailing a proposal to improve the operation of the Rocky Hill Yard Waste Drop-Off Site. As you know, we've made a mention of this in some of our previous finance discussions and also some of his updates to the board, that there is concerns regarding the ability of the site to be self-sustaining, and we're getting beyond that without having some new guidelines put into place. So you will see with the memo, there is some proposals that relate to the hours and altering the hours and taking measures to reduce non-resident and contracted dumping at the site to prevent the town from actually expending money to actually remove the excess debris. So he's looking for a decision sometime before the Rocky Hill opening day, which is going to be April 6th. So I anticipate in the month of March, we'll have Sean before us, and we may have him for more than one thing. But wanted to give you some advanced information for that. The next item has to do with just alerting the town board that we have actually submitted our annual report of civil service employment for the town of Oxford, and it was submitted by our assistant town manager, who also acts as the liaison for civil service for the town. And it is a requirement, and it was submitted on February 11th. And you can see that report in your actual meeting package. The next item has to do with something that we're really extremely proud of. I know the board has been alerted that the town finally reached its Green Communities designation, and because of that, was awarded a $163,880 grant that will be used for energy reduction projects throughout the town. It is our first actual grant, and because it's a designation, we have some latitude about what we're going to be perhaps putting that money towards. It will be part of my capital budget that I will be submitting to you, and it will be offset by this grant. Because this is our first year, it opens us up now to be eligible for usually around $200,000 in Green Community incentives. So as we're looking at our projects, and Sean has done a great job, and so has the energy consultant that we hired, we have a long list of things that will be moving us to some real substantial reductions. We're also, this year in particular, because we just met on this today, and we have to submit our main projects that we're going to do, and we may actually be able to do two major boiler projects that would have been costing us in our capital project. So congratulations to everybody who worked on this, because it has required a yeoman's effort to get to this point. The next item is something that I wanted to bring to the town board's attention here is that on February 10th, my office had received notification that the town had been awarded a $30,000 matching grant from the Massachusetts State Historic Records Advisory Board, also known as SHRAB. I would love to change that, but I wanted to, I wanted to give acknowledgement to this board, in particular, our vice chairwoman and also Megan Troyano. Both of you had articulated to me personally and also publicly that if there was something we could do with regards to our beautiful historic monuments, because some of them really appeared to be suffering just from having old age syndrome and suffering with the elements. This was a project that I had put aside, actually, before I even came here, I put it in my folder of available grants. And so when you brought it up, I went to that folder and said, there is a grant that we could apply for. And I want to give credit because Jordan wanted to work on this with us, and we worked through a long weekend to get it done, did a great job. I know we have some pictures up there of some of our existing monuments, and what this money will do is professionally clean our monuments. But we also originally thought about putting a new monument together to actually honor our veteran nurses that are really in our history books in this town. But when the professional went to each one of the monuments, it was determined that one of our monuments was so compromised that we need to actually rebuild it and put a new granite marker. So the project will be cleaned professionally, and it will be fixing and making sure that our monument that we have that's existing for our World War I will go into perpetuity for another 100 years or more. So I want to thank this board for that, and I think this will be a wonderful contribution to our veterans. Hopefully you approve Jack, right?
I hope so.
I know. And with all of the things that have happened this year, you know, with Reefs Across America, and our honor guard, and our, you know, record-setting attendance at our veterans' luncheon, it's because the direction of this town wants to honor our veterans, and this board takes that very seriously. So thank you. The next item is just to alert you that we've applied for the Mass Trails Grant. Last year, we applied for about a $146,000 grant. We were not successful in that endeavor to create the Green Briar Park recreational trail. I had gotten some feedback on how I could improve that application. We've done that. We've reduced the cost a little bit, because I'm hoping to offset that with some other funding that would be not from the state, but from other donation sources. This would be, if we are to get it, the first full trail that is actually ADA compliant, and that would be able to benefit everybody in the community. So I'm hoping with the fact that we had done a lot of outreach both last August and September to make improvements, that we could actually garner this and do it to very little, if no cost, to the taxpayer. The next item is another grant, and I am here to alert you that the MACCS eCitation Award was given to the Oxford Police Department. Because of the great work of coordinating grant efforts, our police chief has notified myself and you that on February 11th, the department was awarded nine eCitation printers from the citation program. And these printers actually simplify the process of writing a citation. I know that's good for them. Right, chief? That's good for you. But maybe not for the people who stalked. But I want to just congratulate, as part of, you know, we ask them to honor their, the oath that they take to uphold the public safety and to enforce the laws. So congratulations to Chief Sad and the Oxford Police Department for this award. The next item has to do with the Oxford Community Center. And once again, there's a standing in the social media world and also in what I consider to be community world, where hulafrog.com looks at different community centers across the country and also looks at libraries. And once again, they have given a vote to our summer camp. Actually, I think the summer camp is the first time it's been, the Oxford Community Center, I think, has received the all-around best. Oxford Community Centers received the whole award, but now they're actually zeroing in on a summer camp. And anybody who attended the summer camp that, you know, has been greatly improved by having the ability to host a lot of its programming at the Carbuncle Beach House, it's because of the great, I think, direction that Stacy Bar, our Director of Community Programs, has been able to do. So I want to just congratulate publicly the Oxford Community Center staff for achieving this milestone. And all of the very low-paid this milestone and all of the very low-paid counselors that we have and the lifeguards and everybody who puts that program together, because it's where our children are going on a daily basis where they can go and play and recreate safely. And that's a big tribute to the community center. The next item is to alert you, and I hope some of you will participate, that the community reading day is fast approaching. The superintendent has notified us that the AM Chapey School will be hosting the reading day on March 4th. This year, it will go from 9:30 in the morning to 10:00 a.m. And of course, the event is to foster a commitment between school and the broader community and to promote the importance of reading. If any of you are interested in participating, please let us know by Friday, February 28th. I hear that you can also pick your own book, which I am doing. I love Dr. Seuss. So that's what, you can also, also ask for what grade you'd like to do. I know many of you have done it, but it's really a lot of fun. The next item is another event that has become a time-honored tradition and the Oxford Police and Fire Departments, bless you, put a lot of effort into it and that's the Operation Santa 5K Road Race. At your previous meeting on January 28th, you did vote to approve the actual date for Sunday, May 17th. At this point, the two departments for public safety are requesting participants to register for the race either at the police station or online at racewire.com using the identification code, we should have put that up there, Jordan, 11498. Additionally, so I think that's different than the way they've done it before. And additionally, we have a request that any town employees that are going to volunteer are encouraged to attend the upcoming meeting on February 29th about Operation Santa that will be held at the police station at 3:15. So anybody who's interested or has questions can ask Brittany Morgan at the police dispatch center. I've also received notifications, I have been receiving them from the Board of Health Department about both the coronavirus and now, believe it or not, E. What the State Department of Public Health is doing is alerting all of the boards of health across the state that because it's been a fairly mild winter and a fairly wet winter, they're also anticipating we're going to have another successive difficult year with triple E. And because of that, the Board of Health would like us to announce here that for people who are planning public events in the future, think about a time cutoff of about 6:00 p.m. just in case we find ourselves in a situation where we have many months where we are going to not want people to be going past dusk and into the evening hours because we have the probability that we could be facing another significant triple E season. Early voting reminder, I know everybody who's here can see that we have our voting booth set up. It started this past Monday, February 24th. It does go to this coming Friday, February 28th. This is for the presidential primary, so anybody who does not believe they'll be able to come to vote on the presidential primary election, which will be March 3rd from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the precinct sites that we have had, both at Chapey School and Oxford Middle School, then what we would like people to do is know that they can come here all this week from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 in the afternoon and vote early in either the Republican, actually the several primary ballots they can hold. So I would strongly encourage people to do that. It is a presidential election yet. The next item has to do with an event, not an event, an actual meeting that we have set up that is designated to be a public meeting in which we start to share the possibility of our Main Street and visioning our Main Street in the future. We have the ability to submit for state funds to help us make improvements to Main Street and our intersections. This, on February 26th, which is tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m., we are going to have at the actual police station. We're having TEC Engineering and our DPW Director and a number of people come and talk about how we are looking at our Main Street and what kind of improvements could we do and could we do through the Mass DOT tip program and also through our Complete Streets Program grants. What do we want to see our Main Street looking like in the future and how can we accommodate both vehicle traffic, pedestrian traffic, and bicycle traffic? And how do we want to maintain that wonderful small-town feel but at the same time make improvements so that we can actually reduce the risk that we have to those people who are walking and bicycling and driving? So this will be a combination of a presentation to start to get feedback. I want you to know that Sean and I took it seriously. We notified abouters that go basically beyond, along Main Street, basically beyond Jocelyn Park, a little bit further and also the opposite side of this intersection going, you know, towards Webster, beyond the Cumberland Farms down there. So, you know, we're starting out with the people who really live along the area that might have the potential for being improved and we hope to get some, both, not just feedback but to start talking with TEC Engineering to see what they're coming up with and how we can think about what kind of improvements the town would like to see and how we can support those. So it's a preliminary, we've got many more steps to go, but they have already started to look at the designing and, you know, I think every great community that has a historic character looks to see how that next generation, despite having gone from buggy and wagon to vehicles, and we need to just continue to think about improvements that we can make to sustain the quality of life that we have and also make improvements that improve public safety first and foremost. So that's what we're going to do tomorrow evening, so we're looking forward to that. And that will conclude my report for the board this evening.
Great. Thank you. Selecting one to request, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I've got a handful of items here. First of all, I would just like to also personally express my condolences to Joe Tag's family. I served on the Finance Committee with him and actually learned quite a bit from him. I was new when he was relatively seasoned and he taught me a lot when I was on that committee and it's a great loss to the town and to its families. So I just would like to publicly thank them. And then also John Parisot's family as well. I went to school with both of his children and I remember him always being around town and going to the games and everything and he'll be sorely missed. So I just would like to express my condolences on that as well. I have, I have a couple of items. Madam Town Manager, I apologize, I probably, I should really get these to you further in advance than I did, but I'd like to just ask, I think the last time I, we were talking about Sacra Rafa, it was out to bid? Are we still out to bid?
It's, it's not out to bid yet and there's a reason why. You have to have all of the permitting as part of that so that we can really truly estimate what the costs would be associated with it. So Sean told me to relay to the board that it's still on target for what we consider to be this construction season, probably more late in the summer and very early fall. What he is working fervently on right now in trying to get the state DEP, we have two permits, one relates to water quality and the other, I can't remember what he said to me, I apologize, but he could tell you about it. The other piece of it is there is a trench dredging kind of permit that also has to be approved. So these aren't local improvements, these are state approvals. So as soon as that happens, then he will release it. He's got it constructed for being able to put out to bid, but these are just the final pieces. But he said it's not to be alarmed by that this is a normal process and he expects that we should be hearing shortly from them. But it's, it's good to follow up and we both appreciate being able to articulate it back to the public so that they know we're still moving for this construction season.
Okay. Just a couple of ideas, things I just want to follow up on. Where are we with the marijuana facilities in North Oxford? I think I saw the property transferred, but I'm not 100% certain if that's what it was, so I just wanted to see.
So more recently, I've been asked what was the status of it? You know, obviously, we sign off the host agreement and they move forward in their own process. Their process, I think, was negotiating with the owner of the property, who owns the gas station across the way. They have spent a lot of time deliberating with the Mass DOT over the Route 20 project relative to, not so much that they don't have a build-out of what they'd like to see for a facility, but that building that's an eyesore on the corner that is the former entertainment club is...
Party place.
Party place. They were, they were hoping that the timing would work with the major Route 20 project. It appears that that isn't going to happen because they don't want to wait, because you, as you knew from the last meeting, that the state had updated us that the target date for starting that project has been pushed out for about two years and so that would be too long for the company. So I did actually reach out to them recently because I had another board member ask me about the status and they had recently had a very productive meeting and they expected that this final piece was going to go through. So you probably are paying attention to it with your line of work much more closely than I am, but I'm glad to hear because that's what they had told me. So if that is indeed the case, it will move forward. The one thing that they, the caveat here is that even though they took time to see if the state would take the building, because of course demolition isn't the cost, they will still be taking some of the land, the state will, but it would have been nice and timely if they could have done that. Having said that, the company that you did honor with a host agreement to move forward has been vetted quite significantly by the state already for another one of their companies. So they expect that that process will go more quickly because they have already gone through the process with the state and the state knows the company. So even though they took some time here, they expect that process to continue in a more expedited manner.
So the, but the agreements that they needed to sign with us have all, that's all been done?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that's, and also that there was a smaller one up the road, I think, that he was going to, and that agreement was signed as well?
Yes, the Haven, Haven extract. Yes, yes. And so, you know, one of the things that, that's happened is unfortunately with some of the news of some people who did an end run to the, the actual post-agreement process in other towns, created, I think, a pausing by the state Cannabis Control Commission that they need to look a little bit more closely and vet more thoroughly. And because of that, the entire process has slowed down a bit for actually approving projects. But having said that, I think now, you know, they've gotten a lot of, you know, experience under their belt and they anticipate that it should go smoothly, both, for both of those companies. But, you know, you've done your job, now they've got to do their job, which is they go to the state and prove their case to the state. And they go with a signed host agreement which, and they've had their community meeting already. I'm talking about the major one. The other one also had done that in terms of, you know, what they have to do for creating a manufacturing cannabis company.
And then while I'm also spitballing here...
Yeah, go ahead.
The, we were negotiating with a solar farm not too long ago for the, for the taxes on the equipment.
Yes.
Has that been resolved?
It's very close.
Okay.
Okay. We had a meeting this week and we're getting closer to a pilot agreement and how we arrive of that, you know, I'll be talking with the board about shortly. But we're still in the negotiation phase. It's been a longstanding, you know, since last year. Not for the manager not wanting to push it, it's been more about getting to that yes. And I wanted to have the town in the strongest position as possible. And the company had actually sold off the actual solar farm to a Wall Street corporation, but yet Blue Wave still has a real stake in wanting this town to be made whole going forward. And I think we're going to have an excellent proposal that guarantees an annual contribution to the town in terms of personal property tax.
Yes.
And also another piece that will be, I think, very positive for the town. So I'm looking forward to that and we expect that, I would hope, because we've put off the actual hearing a number of times, we've agreed to not go to the state and to try to keep working on it. So they want it done before, you know, I would say before May. So we'll get it to you.
Well, I just...
But thank you for asking.
No, but just out of curiosity, while we're negotiating this, because they are seemed, you know, they are, I'm sure they're slow, especially with that sale to the Wall Street entity. Are we losing tax dollars on that?
No, because we've already been paid and they're looking for an abatement and for us to rebate it.
Got it.
So both 2018 and 2019 have been paid. They've only challenged one year. However, you know, we'd like to get into a pattern of having some reliable amount that comes in on a regular basis that's fair and equitable in terms of personal property tax valuation and expectation for payment.
Got it. Thank you. And a couple, I don't know what it is, but clearly there's just been three weeks in between meetings, right? So I've had a couple of residents reach out to me that need septic systems installed and it looks like we put a moratorium on our septic systems for about four months or so. And I'm hearing in my basic rudimentary research that a lot of towns in the area have stopped putting moratoriums on them and that we can do them year-round. Because you can install them year-round. It's a little colder, but you can, they are done. And I was just wondering if that's something we could ask the Board of Health to look at.
Sure. Not being a septic expert myself...
That's okay.
That's one of the things I had...
That's news, news.
That is news.
Oh, yeah, no, they, they do them. It's not...
We can't do them until April in Oxford, I believe is what our charter by law says.
They do them, it's cold, but they do them.
Well, it's not the cold as much as the frost and the whole filtration system. You're, you're talking about an inspector having a, an engineer having to verify that the system will function properly in the cold weather. Yeah, there's such a, the frost, I don't know how they can do that.
I'm trying to get some information.
Yeah, maybe just get some info on that, that'd be great. And then my last item, everyone's just not breathing, so I relieve. My last item is, you know, I, I am going to be going to that visioning meeting tomorrow, tomorrow night. I think it'll be very interesting to hear what the residents have to say. You know, I do just want to, you know, continue to go on record that I think, I understand that there is a pool of money that we could potentially get because it's the center of town and it is that historical area. But I do need to continue to stay on the fact that we have other roads that are much bigger priorities that we've got to address. And, you know, I appreciate the willingness of, you know, looking at this because there are a pool of funds out there, but as a representative of this community, I, I would much rather embrace some sort of plan...
So it's coming.
To, good. To fix all of the other roads that lead into Main Street. So...
And I think we all share that. I know my frustration is to look at, you know, a backlog of, and I know our DPW Director, you know, we both kind of inherited what might have been, you know, an acceptance of roads prematurely.
Absolutely.
And so now we have a lot of them that need to be done and, you know, we heard that indication when we were looking at the DPW facility loud and clear. We have both been working on that and so has our Finance Director. We're looking at being able to put a plan in front of this board that I think, you know, puts our money where our mouth is, puts the onus on shared responsibility and doing a large number of projects for all these small roads and getting it done as fast as possible. Having said that, I don't want the town to be penny-wise and pound-foolish when there is money that the state will only allocate to certain roads that it's allowed to work on. And Main Street, you know, Route 12 is one of those. And so, you know, that would be something that I wouldn't want us to bypass, but I think we can do both. I absolutely believe we can do both and, you know, these things take time to actually put together and, you know, you have a delegate on the central mass regional planning and CMMPO and we need to leverage that because when you don't have somebody who's built up a longstanding history with that organization, it's much easier for them to fund, you know, transportation improvement projects that get state funding in a lot of other towns. And I want to make sure that Oxford gets its fair share of a road that has eligibility for state funding. All these little roads that we have that, that need to be fixed, that becomes the onus of the town and we need to do that. So I've heard that... So, I, I've heard that loud and clear from residents like you have, and the commitment is to put together a proposal. I think a proposal that will do substantially more roads. But again, it will require us to think out of the box and do something different, and I'm hopeful we're close to being able to put that plan together. Just so that you know, we've gone out, and through the DPW, we'll talk more. I know our director, through my ask, has gone back out and commissioned a company to review all of our roads. They do a thorough analysis to revisit the status of what grade they are in at the moment, and they are using new types of equipment to actually gauge the real condition of the roads. So, all of that's being done, the actual costs associated with that are being completely reviewed, and then also, you know, a way to finance a much stronger initiative to get it done is going to be proposed, so.
Did we have to go back out and redo that because the information we had was just so old?
It's a, well, no, it's a, yeah, it's, part of it is not even just old, I mean, if you have a really bad winter, all of a sudden, you know, a road that seemed to be, you know, in the middle of a grade of being, needing repair, all of a sudden gets elevated because, you know, it's got, you know, 20 more potholes, and, you know, they couldn't get to it, and it degraded down below the, the normal milling stage, let's just say, and needs actual structural enhancements. You know, they can change, and they can change because of weather, they can change because of other construction, they can change because a developer comes in and lays very thin asphalt where they dug up the road, there could be a whole number of things. So, nowadays, they're actually, the technology has gotten so advanced where they actually have cameras that are underneath cars, and they film and take pictures of the roadway every 10 feet. So they then put, like, it's thousands, tens of thousands of pictures, and they put it together for each road, and they come up with, this is the quality, and then they go out and then have engineers also do visual inspections on top of that. So, it winds up being a pretty fairly complex process, but they're getting it to being no different than when Google Maps drives around, you see those cars with the cameras turned on.
Right.
That's kind of what they're doing with the roads and actually looking in real time what it looks like. And so, they've sped up the ability to look at that in a more frequent term and, you know, get a, a much better understanding of what would the true cost be and which are the ones that are in the worst shape.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your indulgent time also, thank you.
Sean.
Can I just have two quick, interesting things? Both of them are for Sean. I just was wondering if we could get a Water Street Railroad track update, please?
Oh, yeah.
Because it's getting worse, and I understand that we're coming out of the winter, but I believe the last update was that somebody was going to be out there in December, and then he had to talk to it in person, and I was just wondering, I've had a few residents from that area complain to me that it's getting worse and that their cars are getting damaged going over the tracks, so I just didn't know if we could get an update on that, please?
It's funny you bring that up because I went to a meeting last week, and I saw Sean, and I happened to ask him about, because there's a little hole developing on the Sutton Ave bridge area. So I mentioned that to him, and he said that with the new administration of the railroad that he's explained to us, they're coming out this spring and going to evaluate what they can do to fix both areas.
Can we maybe have them come out and do some sort of temporary patch in the interim though, because, I mean, the spring could be May.
Right, right.
We can ask. We're at the mercy of the railroad company, and we're lucky and fortunate, and I really do say this, because there are some times we've, they've just taken a totally tone deaf stance in the past. So, I was really pleased that they actually came out despite, you know, the fact that the board kept the pressure on us. But sometimes you can't even get to the actual person in charge, and that's part of the problem. And for some reason, because they fall under, you know, federal protections in terms of how they operate and what they are responsible for and what they have for rights away, it makes it more difficult. But if Sean says that we're getting someone here for spring, that I can probably say, you know, with a good amount of certainty that it's going to happen. However, this is, you know, something that I think we can talk about, if there's something we can do that's, maybe it's not right at the railroad piece of it-
Well, no, it's definitely at the railroad where the hole is.
It is.
It has to be the railroad company, and while I completely respect that Sean thinks that someone's coming out in the spring, we thought someone was coming out in December as well. So, I'm sure that's what Sean believes, and I would like to believe in the railroad company as well. I know it's not Sean's fault in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, and we go on there right away.
Because we, we can't do it, the railroad company has to do it, but at the same time, the railroad company is going to give at some point. Like, I, I know they're busy, but at the same time, it's, people want to start sending in their car bills to them because they're being damaged.
Right, exactly. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. But let's see if we can motivate them, especially with the new administration.
Can I, can I add something real quick on that? Can I add something real quick on that?
Sure.
Madam Town Manager, since you have an expert on grants, maybe in your folder-
I'll add it.
They're, they're, the, the last time they were out, physically out, right, and they did some, some minor repairs, remember when they fixed Sutton Ave, and they did fix some of those roads, they did patch some of them? The, the person from the railroad company told them that you can apply for a federal grant-
Okay.
And that Sutton Ave was eligible, for some reason, for one of these federal grants to fix and repair that entire section.
Oh, okay.
So-
I'm glad you heard that, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I heard that too. So, now they might come back and say, no, that's not true, and, you know, maybe it was, you know, some imposter posing as the railroad company.
Right, because they feel like anything at this point, because the poor residents feel like they're being, they're asking them-
Oh, absolutely.
It's been an ongoing problem for years, you know, it's like, yikes, at least Federal Hill, that, I went over that, that's real nice.
Yeah, yeah, that is nice.
And then, the only other thing that I have is, I just didn't know if we could possibly get an update as to when, I know it's not super important, but when the lines are going to be painted on the new section of 56.
Okay.
Because there's just the temporary, like, dotted lines separating the two lanes from each other, but it's not entirely clear where the lines are, and where it's such high speed in that area, it's much wider than it was before, and also at the intersection going towards Leicester at Mellon Commons, it's not indicated that it's actually two lanes at that intersection going towards Leicester, so people don't know how to use the intersection because the lines aren't there.
Yes.
So, I just didn't know if we could get an update as to when that was going to be, and again, I know we're coming out of the winter and you can't paint, freezing out, but-
Oh, wind gust.
Yeah, exactly.
I know. I was anticipating it today, but, no.
Had a little rain.
But just if we could maybe get an update-
Okay.
Be super, and I'm done.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sad.
Yes, since we're on roads.
Why don't you just drive on down?
I brought this up before, and Sean did get back to us, and it regards to Dudley Road-
Dudley Road, yeah.
How bad that is. It's going up towards Dudley, right to the top of the hill. And Sean came back and said that he saw it, it's a, it's a priority. They did have a company go up and scrape the top layer as much as they could of the surface, the Moore Webster Road intersection to the Dudley Line. But there are some, still some rough spots there, and the reason for having it scraped like that is they're going to be resurfacing it.
Correct.
Which was a real surprise to me. People are really happy that it's being done, but the residents on the top of the hill are concerned that investing that kind of money in that road and not having proper drainage could be an issue. I did take a ride up there yesterday, the top of the hill, and someone is building, I don't know if it's a home or a number of homes, on the right-hand side just before the Dudley Line, it's up on the hill, and it's being built way in the woods, so there's a dirt driveway, roadway, that goes quite a distance, and water is coming down that road, and it's coming down Dudley Road, and it's causing a freeze-
Okay.
For at least 100 to 150 yards down Dudley Road-
Okay.
On the right-hand side. And that's where all those potholes originally-
Came from, maybe, yeah.
So if this is going to be, continually be a problem, then, you know, why invest that kind of money in putting a road in there, repairing it, and having it chewed up again because of drainage problems? So I would ask that Sean go up and take a look at that.
Okay.
I went up yesterday, you can see where the ice is still there, the water is now running because it's warmer weather.
Sure.
You can see the whole, noggly side of Dudley Road up on the hill, all drainage water, all the way down the road.
Okay.
So, it, it's a serious problem, it really is. If you could take a look at that and get back to us on that.
Well, and maybe there is, you know, a site plan that requires or recalls for, you know, drainage improvements that the actual property owner-
Yeah.
Where this, you know, road going up that might be, you know, a proposed development. I'm not, you know, familiar with it, but I'm going to find out.
I don't know, I haven't had a chance to talk to anyone on the planning board.
Okay.
There is some building going on up there, and I think that's what's causing the problem. I did notice that the sand sweepers are up, it's the earliest I've ever seen them up.
Really?
And they're doing a good job, they're in South Box today, and that's nice to see, it makes you feel like spring is right around the corner.
Just hold that, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll have to get another-
Those extreme minor storms and-
Yeah, I just looked at my window.
And I did take a ride up to the dog park-
Okay.
Yesterday, it was a beautiful day. And all the talking spuds were taken, except the handicap ones. So people are using that. I was amazed at the number of people, the number of dogs inside that fenced-in area. They are getting some use out of that.
You know, we, we debated on about an opening because, you know, it was kind of completed right, you know, the month of December, and some people talked about not, you know, opening it up to the public until we have an official ribbon cutting, and, you know, people like Chris Bird and Sean, everybody kind of talked about, why don't we let it be open until the spring and we do an official opening? But yes, it's really beautiful. I told you that after, you know, one night when they were first putting down certain elements, it was really, you know, eye-opening, and people will use it.
Yes, yeah.
And it's a large dog park in comparison to some others, so it's-
And I do think though that they need a couple more hydrants, because the dogs are in line waiting to use that one hydrant.
Okay.
Do you want to take numbers?
That's terrible. I'll check to see if there are any grants.
It might be a catch for that.
I know somebody who had a lot of hydrants, they're no antique hydrants, right? I don't know, I'll have to take a look at that.
Maybe even some of the town.
Some hydrants. Oh, gosh, I'm kidding, I would do that.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, I can't remember when we have applied and received so many grants in the shop here in town. And I have to say that I think it's attributed to town managers' efforts in not letting anything go by. If there's something out there, we've got an application in for it, and I think that's great, and you ought to be commended for that, because I can't recall us getting this many grants. It seems like every time we come to a meeting, there's a new grant we got.
Yeah, it's a lot of writing, and it's a lot of, you know, we have a lot of great projects, and, you know, this board supports, you know, trying to find creative ways of getting to do projects that don't just, you know, get bypassed each budget cycle because we don't have the money, and, you know, so, and some of these are going to save us money, you know, in the long run, and that gets put to the bottom line and allows us, you know, to continue to grow in, I think, a good way. So, it's, it's one of those things, I keep saying that, you know, while the office of the state and the federal government and independent institutions are full right now, it's a good time to apply, and, and if we weren't successful last year, I come around and get back at it again and try to do it again. And, you know, that's why some people even hire official grant writers, I just so happen to have a good background to work with other people and make them realize, but we have good department heads too, you know, our public safety, official department heads are working hard, and some of their people are just even coming up with ideas to, you know, to even small hanging fruit, I call it, for grants. And that's money we don't have to take out of our pockets to do.
No, it's a-
You know, so it does, it does, and it's important, so thank you. I, you know, I know sometimes it's just nice to make those announcements, but, you know, it's, it's a lot of effort and it is excitement because we can get things done. And you can ask Sean and any of the department heads that when we have to do something together as a team, it really is, you know, a collaborative effort. I mean, the Green Communities was definitely across different departments, a lot of people, everything from looking at our fleet maintenance to, you know, looking at our facilities, working with the school department, prioritizing the projects. It's, you know, sometimes you have to be, you know, a scientist for some of these different, you know, proposals that we put forward, and I don't just mean Green Communities, stormwater. The next thing you're going to hear about us is we're going to try to go for a municipal vulnerability designation, so that will open us up to large-scale grants to do stormwater and to do street improvements where it's very similar to what you're talking about, you know, where we have runoff and, you know, we're trying to increase sustainability and make roadway improvements and water quality improvements. So, we can't touch those ones until we become designated, so we're going to have to go through that as a formal exercise as well, so. But, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained, I'm trying to say something.
Well, I just wanted to say job well done.
Thank you, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Sad, and as usual, you stole my fury, because that was exactly on the top of my list, is that-
I've got a couple things left, I don't know what you're talking about.
See, I'm trying to get through my report quicker and quicker, so we have shorter meetings, and everybody's like, well, wait a minute, that's not short enough.
I've been on this board a few years, and it is, the grants that we've seen, it's kudos to you and, you know, for just pushing other department heads to, to, you know, hey, the money's there, go at it, and you never know. I mean, when you can get the memorials cleaned and beautified, you know, and it doesn't cost a town-
New senior van.
And new senior van that's coming, which is, I'm going to get into that also, it's, it's great, great. And I want to use this as a segue to talk a little bit, because I am a member of the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and it's something we meet every month, and I'm the representative for this area. And the, one of the things that the town is getting, and again, it costs the town very little money, I think we're talking about like it was $130,000 van, it's costing the town, I think it's $27,000 was our tie-in to it. And we get this van because through the process of the federal government applying for these grants and the regional, you know, the RTA, so we're going to get this beautiful van. And this, this is something that I don't think the general public understands what's involved with this whole program, because with the Central Mass, for example, Route 20, I know I haven't been at a couple of meetings because of personal reasons, I was at that meeting, and that's a whole TIP project, you know, you're talking, you're talking $20 million, $25 million, it's going to be over two, two years that that go, that's a big hunk of money for this region to be put on the list, because usually most of the things we deal with, with the Central Mass, is you get five, five million here and six million here, so that's, that's a tremendous thing, and it was, it was funny to be at that meeting, as I know many of us were there, that seemed a lot of the people were gripped and were from Cheltenham, you know? We did have a few people concerned that around Route 20 in Oxford, and hopefully, I, I feel confident their concerns will be worked out, and it was great to see people attending that meeting, and we're working on that. But that leads me into the Main Street project, because I have also heard some grumblings, and that's an entire TIP project, that's going across the town, virtually nothing. When I mean virtually, we pay for some of the planning, so there's going to be some thou, a few thousand dollars there to do the planning. But after that, it goes to the, to our board, we, you know, it's a presentation, we do it, all the plans are presented, and eventually, it's, it's going to be awarded through the TIP program, so it's a federal grant, it costs us nothing, and we're only going to improve Main Street, so it's not as dangerous for people walking across, for bicycles, things like that. And that kind of leads me into the Mass Grant that you just applied for, for the- And that kind of leads me into the Mass Grant that you just applied for, for the Greenbrier Park. Because the last meeting I was at, and again, I've been on that board for a few years, we had two major bicycle developments that came forward that are going to be done in the region. One is in Blackstone. The other one is the Worcester area, something to do with that. And you're talking million-dollar bike trails. This is, the one in Blackstone's a 22-mile trail that goes from Worcester all the way to Providence, Rhode Island. And they're just adding this little connection device area. And it just led me to believe, led me back to the town where I've been involved in the master plan. And part of our committee have been talking about improving residential trails and bike routes and things like that. And it just really made me happy to see that there's another avenue that we could get possibly bike trails through something like this, through the Greenbrier area that could improve the bike areas. And that's what helped pedestrians also in the downtown area if that project does come about. So these are a lot of things that I've been involved with, and I was happy to hear, we're talking about roads and stuff, and this has been a major thing with us and I've been involved with. So I just, I hope the people come with an open mind, that they're not thinking, no, they're not going to fix my road. You're not going to get TIP money, federal money, to fix, you know, Moore Webster Road or Water Street or any place, you know, Church Street. It's not going to happen. That's not what it's for. It's for these major federal links. So, and that's, why should we let other towns? Because right now, we're talking about, what, 26, 27? Yeah, 2026, 27. That's what we're talking about for tips on the list right now. Those are programs that have already been set up that, hey, these are in the works. So this is something that may not happen for quite a while because we've got to go through the works, but it's there. So we should take advantage of it, is my opinion. So, anyway, I was on my soapbox.
The other thing too is if you have prepared engineering plans, communities that plan well in advance are usually ones that can tap into those resources, and they will reconfigure the annual allotments based on how prepared a community is. So this is part of our planning process and preliminary engineering, which is why we hired the firm to look at that. So when we do those kinds of things, we don't rely on the state to come up with the design and engineering. We provide it for them in advance so that we can actually get on the list quicker and also potentially be able to be reconfigured if other projects aren't quite ready to go. You know, so, so we could get conceivably done earlier. But like he said, if we don't get on the list, we don't get to access.
Well, that's, that's what happened this year with Route 20. Since that 10, 11 million isn't being used for Route 20 this year, well, that opened up these other towns to get their own, their projects done. So, you know, we were hearing about like Warren and Route 32 and all those and different that just slid right in because they're ready and their plans are ready. And so it's just a division of the money. You're not going to turn it back to the federal government. So our group is looking at, okay, where can we put this? And that's what we do. So, you know, you never know. Anyway.
Excellent. Thank you. That helps us understand.
Well, yeah, because, you know, because I agree with you. Some people are saying, wow, you know, my road's awful. How would it, Main Street's fine. And it's like, yeah, but this is getting done with money that won't affect us. So, you know, and it's, it's hard to understand. It took me a while, you know, being on that board to understand how everything worked, you know? And I found my job is really important because, you know, Worcester, you know, they're the number one priority. It's, they got a lot of people working for them, full-time people working. So when they put their plan in, they're right up there, you know? So you get all these other towns that are down, and that's the way it works. So you've got to really push to get your.
I know.
And so that's what I try to do anyway. So anyway.
Well, thank you.
That being said, intended motion to adjourn.
I made that motion.
Saying that motion.
Call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will, yes. For an affirmative, one absent, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
So much.
And thank you for watching.